It is 9:00 AM. Brazos County Commissioners Court will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, September the 10th, 2024, 9:00 AM, Commissioners' courtroom in County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. The court will hear comments on the proposed budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025. All interested parties are invited to attend said hearing and present their cause, if any, far or against the proposed budget. This budget will raise more money, our more total property taxes than last year's budget by $9,704,651, or 9.05%. And of that amount, $3,440,32 is the tax revenue will be raised from new property tax added to the tax rolls. The proposed budget is filed with the county clerk's office and will remain on file in that office of the county clerk in accordance with existing state statutes. All interested parties are urged to acquaint themselves with said budget during the time it remains on file with county clerk. For your convenience, the proposed budget has been placed on the county website at www.brazoscountytx.gov. So we open up the meeting, and I've got a list of speakers. Kathy Beans.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judges. Good to see you again. Looking at the proposed budget that you've put online, I noticed that in the calendar year 2122 and also in 2020 to 2023, that the actual expenditures for salaries and wages were about $44 and $49 million respectively. The 2023-24 budget shows $59.6 million, but the expenditures to date is only $50 million, roughly. So there's a $9 million difference between what was budgeted for '24 and what we've spent this year. And I know we have 20 days left in the year, but probably not going to spend $9 million. And there's been discussion in the court, I've been witness to, about unfilled positions that are offered in the county. But considering that those positions remain unfilled and there's unspent money in those categories from last year, I don't think it's reasonable for this year's budget to be increased to $66 million. So I would like you to review that. I also noticed that the adopted budget for benefits last year was $35.5 million, but expenditures to date is $28.3. So there's an unspent budget of about $7 million. And the proposed budget for '25 is $37.8 million. So that seems like an unreasonable increase as well. There's a category there that I don't understand. It's not explained, I didn't see it explained anywhere, called other financing uses. And it's $77 million, so that raises a big flag in my mind. Also, I remember the opening discussion two or three weeks ago about salaries and cost of living wages raises. And the original proposal that was mentioned was 4.5, and it was immediately raised to five. I don't remember why it was automatically raised to five from the original 4.5. But I think that it should be reduced back to what the original proposition was, the 4.5, especially since the audit from last year that ended September of '23, we don't have this year's yet, identified the cost of living raise of the 7.5 as the cause for that year's increased expenses. So adding those two. So that was my comments about budget.
Okay. Thank you. Cindy Wiley.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Kathy had a lot to say, and I appreciate that. I just haven't had a lot of time to go back through all of this stuff. But I think with what you just said before we opened, that there is going to be excess I think that speaks for why people sitting here are objecting to the proposed budget that you have offered up to the county. A couple of thoughts I have, I know that, you know, we've been talking about this for weeks now, but, you know, this county is growing, so I get that as a business owner. I get that. But I also want to reiterate to you guys that not only are you obligated to make sure that our county runs efficiently and you protect the public, part of the protecting of the public is their wallet. And I'm not so sure that that has a high enough priority. We have inflation at 17%. Ever since, you know, the administration changed, we have been just having to pay excess amounts of money for the what we could buy, you know, four years ago at half the cost. So I don't even think that 17% really is a justified number. But I get concerned that there's so many people in this community that are having hardships. They can't be here because they're working. They probably have two jobs to make. And even if they're renters, the landlords are going to raise the rent to cover the increase in the property tax. And, you know, you can't separate the tax from the budget because they're intertwined because one generates the revenue. But I think it's very dangerous when the government starts competing with the people for their savings account. And people are depleting their savings accounts to pay for the increase of all of the food. Savings accounts have gone down. I don't have the numbers, but they've gone down. And so really, my ask for you guys is that you please consider the people's wallet, more so than you consider your need for creating legacies or creating these things that you've been wanting to create and COVID interrupted them. That's my ask, is that you help the people because we're hurting. I'm fortunate, but, you know, I'm supporting people that can't make it on their social security check. And I just ask you, think about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Diane Breeding.
Pass.
Pass. Keith King.
Morning.
Morning.
I think with the, talking about the budget here, one thing I think the citizen should know is how much costs there are with the jail and all the illegals. And of course, it ties into even the elections, you know? Elections cost us money. We can't forget about the elections, the border, the cost and the safety with that, and just the cost of living is killing all of us, right? But I want to talk just a little bit about the poverty rate, the median household income and the median home values. And Brazos County, 2022, the poverty rate, 24.3%, almost two times the state-county average, 12% more than Austin, 23rd worst in county and state of 254 counties. Texas poverty rate, 13.9%. Brazos County median household income, $57,562 in 2022, $29,000 less than Austin. Brazos ranks 141 out of 254 counties. It also ranks 45 out of 50 of the top 50 most populous counties in Texas. And that median income in that category is $41,000, half of state average. Texas median income, $73,000. Brazos median home value is $315,536 in the last 12 months, up from $260,800 in 2022. Brazos homeownership, 46.8%, 20 to 28% less than the Texas big cities. We are a county of renters. 2020, Austin homeownership, 74.7%. Dallas-Forth Worth, 69%. Houston, 67.9%. San Antonio, 66%. Remember, Brazos, 46.8%. Brazos income is low. Brazos poverty is high. Inflation is high. So I say redo the budget and ax the taxes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That was the, you got one more? Sean Jerika.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank y'all for the time this morning. I wanted to talk to y'all on a couple of different facets. Sorry, I've got a cold, can't breathe. That's not why I'm here, though. I volunteer a lot with a local nonprofit and do a lot of visits with people who have problems paying their bills. And seeing the firsthand experiences of people that have a lot of difficulty making it from week to week, and how much our rents are going up, their rents are going up. I own a home, thank God, I don't have a rent, but I still have other things I have to pay. So it goes up for all of us. And like others have said, you know, many of those people are working more than one job to get by. To get by in our county takes about $22 an hour at 40 hours a week. A lot of the people I talk to can't get that amount of work per week. So it's just a snowball, and they don't get $22 an hour either. So it's a, it's a snowball that makes everything pretty horrible. So we really need to not raise our taxes this time. Inflation's horrible. Cost of living, the 15% numbers that are thrown out there, that's a number that the government uses, but the actual inflation of what things cost because of things they leave out of that, like fuel and certain food items, is actually higher than 15%. So the numbers our government throws at us, but those inflation numbers are not accurate. The actual numbers are much higher. Our government being the federal government, not you guess. We have $9 million is what the estimated revenue would be by increasing the taxes. And again, you know, that just, looking at the overall budget, there's enough room and overages in different accounts to account for that. So we really don't need that amount either at this time, especially. So speaking on my personal behalf, but also on behalf of many other citizens who can't make it to these meetings, who have to work just to make it, you know, through life, they surely can't, don't have time for that. And, you know, when you're seeing a $200 a month increase for someone's rent for a single breadwinner with kids, and on top, add on to that, their groceries are going through the roof, it's just, we need, they need all the help that they can get, and we can do all that we can to help them do that by keeping our costs down. So I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. Well, was that, that's it? Okay. So we will, good timing, close the public hearing. And it is 9:15. Are y'all ready to go into the next one? You don't need any, okay? Okay. The Commissioners' Court will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, September the 10th, at 9:15, in the Commissioners' courtroom in County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. The court will hear comments on the proposed budget increase for 2024. Interested parties are invited to attend said hearing and present their cause, if any, far or against the tax increase for 2024. So first is Kathy Beans.
Good morning again. According to item seven in today's agenda, the proposed tax rate will increase revenue by 9.05% or $9.7 million, as you said earlier today. Last year's budget produced an increase of $11.7 million in additional revenue by increasing it at a rate of 12.38%. And I think, I'm going to say this for the benefit of people that are here from the public and don't know, as I did not know until a week ago, but you guys all know. When the tax rate is calculated at a no new revenue rate, it's not the same thing as saying the same tax rate that was applied last year will come through to this year. It's a different calculation. So the county takes the total value of all real estate in the county in January, and it reduces that total real estate value by the amount of the county's portion of the sales tax. And then they take that total revenue amount, and they look at how much they want in the budget, and they calculate an interest, a tax rate that will generate that revenue. And that's what tax rate they propose. But a no new revenue rate means that in calculating the new tax rate for the new year, what they're doing is they are saying, how much did we create in revenue last year, and what rate do we need to apply this year that will result in the same revenue? So the property values go up every year, so automatically, even applying a new, no new revenue rate, still generates additional revenue for the county. So I would love it if we could get back to a no new revenue rate and live on what we are increasing the revenues by, every year, by growth in the county. In regard to revenue, this is just a side note, we increased revenue by 3/4 of a million dollars by instituting fees. And I know that's not a tax, and it's a per-user thing, but it's still coming out of people's pockets, and it's another way to hit the public in a financial way that people can't afford. So originally, when talking about the budget a couple of weeks ago, it was said that a tax rate of .4135 would meet the budgetary needs. And you said, no, that's not enough. We want to finance things that might happen in the future, so we don't have to think about it, and we have all this money. I would like to at least return, if we can't go to no new revenue, we should at least be able to go back to that 4.135. But going back to the no new revenue rate, I'd like to point out that McLennan County, a county of similar size as ours, has been able to utilize a no new revenue rate for six contiguous years. Why can't we do that? I don't understand why we can't do that. It doesn't seem like an unreasonable ask.
Okay. Thank you. Paul Beans.
Morning.
Morning.
How you guys doing? Yeah, I'm from Philly, what can I tell you? So I have here, from the Chamber of Commerce, a survey. And a survey tell us which of the following do you think are the biggest issues facing businesses here in Brazos County? Number one, the economy. Well, I would expect that from any Chamber of Commerce. Number two, taxation. What's up there up top? Government regulation. Now, I know you don't have a lot to do as far as government regulation, I understand that, but let me take this a little further. So I was talking to a fellow the other day who moved here from California. Hey, why'd you move here from California? Well, I was in the service, I moved around a lot. Both of my children want to go to Texas A&amp;M. What I'm doing now is an airline pilot, I can live anywhere, so I'm going to come here, I'll be close to my two children. Great. Yeah, couldn't take California anymore. All right. So then he goes on to say, well, as soon as the daughter graduates, I'm going to move. I go, oh, well, if you like here, why are you going to move? He goes, because I can't pay the taxes, they're too high. I'm thinking, he makes a pretty good salary, he's retired Air Force, working for a major airline, and he's having a hard time struggling. Okay. So he says to me, you know, I guess Brazos County is now the California-Texas. So I thought, hmm, let me think about that. So maybe a month or so later, I'm talking to a buddy of mine in Boston, he's retired, and he says, I've had it, I got to get out of here, I'm moving. I go, oh, well, you're going to come to Texas? He goes, yeah. He goes, well, all right. He goes, where should I move? I go, well, you know, you got Robertson County, you got Grimes County, whatever. He goes, well, where do you live? Well, I live in Brazos County. Why wouldn't I move in the county you are? Because we're getting taxed to death. I go, let me tell you something, Eddie, here's the deal. When my taxes are frozen, but they keep going up every year, so today I'm pushing up daisies, and they start, they have, someone's going to have to sell the house, they're going to take one look at the taxes on the property and go, wait a minute, that's a lot of money for taxes, and my kids are going to take a hit on selling the real estate because the price is going to have to come down. All that being said, you're going to end up with a county of renters because corporations are going to continue to come in here and buy properties. I'm not so sure that that's a legacy you're going to want to have. I want you to really take a hard look as to what my lovely wife was talking about as far as, let's take another look at how we actually generate, as you call it, revenue from the taxpayers to fund services that are necessary in the county. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Fred Brown.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I want to read you some startling numbers here. Bread is up 25.4%. Chicken's up 23%. Fruits and vegetables up 23%. Motor vehicle insurance is up 52.9%. And I'm sure we've all felt that. Home insurance is up 52%. Gasoline's up 48%. Motor vehicle repairs up 40%. Public transportation up 22%. And rents up 21%. The Bureau of Labor Statistics said that for an average family of four, it costs them $2,100 a month more to live today than it did three years ago. $2,100 a month. I don't want you to think I'm just picking on the county, because I'm not, because every year we see our taxes go up in our school system, but we have to have the best football facilities, right? Every year, we see our cities raise their tax rate because we have to have the biggest city hall and the best, I didn't mean College Station, but you can take it for whatever you want, and the best parks. People are hurting. Every year, we have a 10% bump on property values if you're a homesteader. If you're not a homesteader, your tax, your valuation is going to go up 10%, 20%, 30% or more. People need help. And all I'm going to ask is that less money in your piggy bank and more money in the piggy banks of the people that support you each and every year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Cindy Wiley.
Morning again. I have this, which I got at the convention, and it's ax the tax. And I, I don't know if anybody is going to stand up here and say, we're good, we love the tax rate that you're going to propose on us. I don't think you're going to get that support. So, and pardon me, my father passed away this morning, so I'm a little bit frazzled, but I'm going, this is important, so I'm here. So I did some math calculation. So back in 2014, if you had a $100,000 house, just county taxes, not city, not school, you paid 485. And with a 10% annual increase of your appraised value, I'll skip, and you guys had the rate at .4850 until 2019, or I'm sorry, until 2020, then you bumped it to .4975 and .4950. Anyway, if anybody wants to look at this, you can. But even when you drop the rate down to .4294, the appraised value of $100,000 property had skyrocketed to $235,636, just with a 10% increase of appraisal value year over year. And you're paying $1,000 in taxes. And then we get to here at the .4197. A $100,000 house in 2014 now has an appraised value of $285,120, and your taxes are $1,196, even though you're seven points difference from when the percentage you charged or the rate you charged in 2014. So it's like, you know, a lot of people don't get it. But the whole deal with the property taxes is you're estimating our properties at an unrealized gain. How can we know that you put a value on my house, you know, say $400,000, and I put it on the market, and interest rates are too high, people can't get loans, I can't sell it for $400,000, but you're going to calculate my taxes on that? So it's an unrealized gain. It is an, it's a hidden tax. And it's not, I don't know. Lubbock County Commissioners, they blocked the property tax hike, they didn't take it, the citizens spoke up, and they, they said, no, we're not going to do it. Now Nina proposed .413500, and that will support the budget, which we argue with you on that, too, that will support the budget that you guys have proposed. So why don't we take that, .413500, instead of the .419700? I mean, it's like, you know, I like all you people, I only know really two of you, but it's like, you can't, you can't not know what's going on in Brazos County. There is just, there, people are really suffering.
We've heard wonderful information this morning, and it's, sometimes, sometimes it's, it's hard to be in your position because you have to provide for the services and all the things that people expect from you. And I appreciate what you do. But you've heard many good reasons today, good statistics, for why we need to maybe take a step back this year. It's not unreasonable to consider that in light of world events, local events, nation events. Too many things are in flux, and they have been going the wrong way. I feel, I feel, I hate to say this, excuse me, I'm, you're contagious. I hate to say this. But I feel like so many good points have been made about the hidden tax and what real people, everyday people, are experiencing. And I, and I don't, I don't want to be rude or unreasonable, but I really would ask you to have, take the time to think about what we've said and perhaps postpone some of the things that we would like to do. I mean, honestly, I wish people, more people could, would be aware of the real expense of what it takes to run the county because costs have gone up for you, too. But it would be nice that if we could, could place a hold on any increase this year, and I would respectfully ask you to consider it. That's enough said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Saka.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I don't speak very often here at Commissioners Court, and if you proposed the new, no new revenue rate, I wouldn't have to. But here I am again, and Judge, at the last meeting, you said the rate of .4197 was just a penny increase. What does that really mean? I mean, does that take into account appraisals increasing every year? Because I guarantee that when people open their tax bills this year, it's going to be more than a penny. And somebody in this county will find that they can't afford to pay their taxes. So when it comes time to vote, I know who I'm not going to vote for because there's only one Commissioner that I would vote for. Please keep that in mind when you vote on the property tax rate this year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Keith King.
Howdy.
Howdy.
I just want to say Axe the Tax. Axe the Tax. Axe the Tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Fontaine.
Good morning. Thank you again for allowing the public to speak. I, too, would urge you to go back and reconsider the no new revenue rate, and I agree totally that there's only one Commissioner that's had that courage to speak up there. The, this, just a penny calculates to 12.1% increase in taxes once you consider the increase in the valuation. And it doesn't really impact me. I'm over 65. But think of the people that it impacts. They need you. They need all of you to have the courage to consider delaying some of the dream projects. And as I pored through the 130-some-odd pages of the budget, some things that jumped out at me, other financing uses is going from 21.6 million to 77.3 million. I don't really know what that is. I could not find the answer there. If somebody from the media is here, I would urge and love it if you dive in deeper. And yet salaries, which is where I'd love to see a bigger increase, salaries are going from 59.6 million to 65.7. If you're going to increase any part of the county more, increase the salaries to the workers more. The other areas that I found that were interesting to me, that I'd love to have more answers, $90.1 million in the estimated unreserved and unrestricted fund balance. What is that for? I don't have an answer. I'm hoping all of you have an answer and you've considered it important, but surely that's an area that can cut that one penny back out. And then the final area of concern that I found in the budget is Project 101 North for a budget of $61 million. That's another one that I don't have a really good answer on. What is it? But it jumped out at me because the figure is so big and so round. So please reconsider that penny. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Russ Ford.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Appreciate you letting us all speak this morning. I don't think you're going to see a lot of people here that are, have come to ask you to raise their taxes. So I'm not going to go over that, but I would like to say, a couple of years ago, when I sat on the other side of that bench there, we had a citizen that came and spoke to us specifically about his mom and buying groceries and knowing ahead of time that you couldn't have everything that you wanted. Sometimes the sugary cereal didn't get to go in the basket or whatever. And I appreciated that, and I took that to heart and worked very diligently to see if I could cut and get us down to no new revenue rate. And that's really my question this morning is, the year that we did go to the no new revenue rate, at least one of our members of that court said, "Gloom and doom. Things are going to go terrible. We're basically going to be bankrupt." And it didn't happen that way. And what I'm asking is that you take one more hard look and see if you can get us back down to the no new revenue rate. I heard someone else mention this morning, that McLennan County, at least for the last six years, has been able to do that, and we've only been able to do it one. And we continue, our appraisals continue to go up. In addition to that, we raise the tax rate. So I'm asking that you be fiscally conservative and look for ways that you can get us down where we're not paying more new taxes every single year. It would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Jerome Rettich.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Jerome Rettich. I agree with many of our, my citizens here that prices are going up. I'm paying more at grocery stores. I'm paying more for gasoline, and I don't like it. But I don't blame the court for that. I blame the federal government for that. And I know my costs are going up. I also know your costs are going up. You're paying more to take care of your, the folks in your jails. You're paying more to take care of the various services you're providing. And I know it's not fun, and I don't like it. I don't like tax increases. I know you don't either, probably. But I do understand the reason for wanting to have a one cent per hundred tax increase this time around, and I support you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Schultz.
Good morning, Court. Thank you for having us today. I appreciate your willingness to serve. My name is Julie Schultz. I live in Precinct One. I own two homes and a business, the structure of the business as well. I'm not a big fan of tax increases either, but having sat on another local governmental entity in College Station, I understand what you're up against. I think what Mr. Rettich said is right. Others have talked about the rise in cost for things. I don't know how you would pay for it if you don't have an increase to cover those, so I'm in agreement with that. I, I do want my services taken care of. I want Greens Prairie Road to be fixed so it's not the nightmare that it is right now. It should have been fixed years ago. I want my law enforcement to come when I call them, so I know we need those funds to cover such things. The fund balance, I understand what it's for, and we actually witnessed a similar situation in College Station after we had the power grid issue. And our, had we not had a fund balance, our utility rates would have been something that I couldn't have afforded to pay. But because we had that, it covered us in that emergency. So I appreciated that. And I don't think the answer is spending the fund balance down and then going and borrowing money. I don't know what wealth management person would tell you that that's a good idea. I don't do that. At my house, we have a savings account, and I think everybody is doing a good thing if they can manage that. You don't spend every penny you have. I will say that I would like to ask this court, I'm fine with the minimal increase. Just please do your job, show up to work, show up to court. And just to set the record straight, I would vote for all of you except for one member, and that member voted for a tax increase for the past 20 years until here recently. I want peace on the court, and I want you to work together and represent us well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clayton Watson.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Clayton Watson. I'm here to address y'all's tax rate that's proposed for fiscal year '25. Please excuse the brevity in my statement. I really have a lot to say, and I've had to trim a lot to fit it into this allotted time. But briefly, I just want to say, I have a bachelor's degree in economics. I have dual master's degrees in business administration and commercial real estate finance from Texas A&amp;M. I'm the owner of an independent real estate brokerage. I'm also a licensed property tax consultant. I also serve as the vice chair of the City of Bryan Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm an elected precinct chair for our county's Republican Party. I just share all of this to establish that I'm well-versed in the effects of population growth, the ad valorem taxing system, operational budgeting, and fiscal conservatism. Over the past 10 days, I reviewed every minute of the video transcripts of workshops and Commissioners Court meetings concerning the proposed budget and the tax rate. I've also spent multiple more hours with our budget officer, Nina Payne, asking questions to make sure that I fully comprehend this year's proposal. Initially, I wanted to get up here and speak on technical matters such as marginal versus structural needs for our growing community, the appropriate use of debt, and whether capital projects like the medical examiner's building are essential or extravagant. I think these points have been fully hashed out in the workshop meetings, and so I'm going to set those aside. I don't think I need to touch on that. Instead, what I want to do is address the two dominant perspectives that have emerged. First, Judge Peters, I commend you for your commitment to fiscal conservatism and for recognizing that a true conservative position doesn't always equate to lower taxes. Managing debt responsibly and ensuring adequate funding for growing pains are essential. However, this court does have a duty to its citizens to ensure that any increased funding comes with stringent oversight. While I know our, excuse me, while I know our budget development process is in capable hands, there is always the risk of unnecessary expenses finding their way into the budget. I'll have more on this in just one moment. To Commissioner Aldrich, while I respect your dedication to accountability, I do believe that your approach is misguided. In 2022, when you and former Commissioner Ford failed to show up and vote on the tax rate, the county was forced to adopt the no new, no new revenue rate. This resulted in a reduction in revenue of 12.4 million versus the then-proposed tax rate. Here we are, two years later, considering a proposed tax rate and a no new revenue rate with a differential of only 6.9 million. Holding all else equal, had you and former Commissioner Ford done your job, not only could this court have adopted this year's no new revenue rate, we could have proposed a tax rate of 0.3760, which is almost two cents lower than your preferred no new revenue rate, all while maintaining the same budget and avoiding additional debt. To make it clear, the facts show that your actions, along with those of former Commissioner Ford's, are the direct cause of this year's tax increase. Now, I don't want to be a complainer without offering some solutions. And I have two that I believe would benefit our county greatly.
Sit back and listen to this.
Without the time to dive into details, I will just say that one involves a small tweak in the way that the appraisal district handles account and review procedures. The other would involve the creation of a citizen-led committee to interface with the county auditor and the budget office during the budget development process. Either idea, if adopted, would provide an extra layer of oversight, ensuring the integrity of our budget while maintaining taxpayer trust through transparency. In closing, I appreciate all of y'all's time and your service to this county. I am more than willing to discuss these proposals in any greater detail at your convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all of y'all for coming in and speaking in that workshop. We're gonna, it's 9:47. It's all the speakers that I had signed up prior to. We are going to adjourn this meeting, and then y'all can get prepared for the 10 o'clock meeting, and we'll come back in and convene in that. So it's 9:47.